You good? You good? Okay. All right, we're gonna call to order the Portsmouth Planning Board Meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. First item on the agenda is a continuance of modifications, Mr. Lozinski. None, hearing none. We'll move to item two. Approval of minutes, Planning Board Meeting, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. What is your pleasure? Go ahead, press the button.
I'm sorry. I have a correction.
Okay.
Members present, I was present in the October eleventh meeting.
You were, and I do apologize for that, yes.
I adjourned the meeting.
You did, yes, and I do apologize, you were present, you also made a couple of motions as well, I believe, yes.
And the second one was on page four, first paragraph. I think the August twenty twenty-three median home price was seven twenty-seven, not nine hundred and twenty-seven. And it was. Yeah, I think it was in the seven hundreds.
I will go back and review and confirm that.
Thank you.
Are there any other notions on the meeting minutes? If not, is there a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes with those two corrections of the median price and the. That Kate was present at the meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. Got a motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No opposed. Item three is applicant owner, Teleria Real Estate Holdings LLC, AP forty-three, lots five and five A, One Little Harbor Landing off Stringham Road. Request for master plan approval for a major land development to construct one new building. So before we continue, I'm actually gonna recuse myself from this petition because of my longstanding association with the nearest abutter WC Coastal. So Mr. Harding is gonna take over as the chair.
Good evening. Who would be, yeah, I guess, please step name, give us your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board, my name's Steve McGilvray. And I'll be representing the applicant tonight. We have two people here, Chris Ruling, who is a company representative. We'll let him discuss the plan for a little bit, and then I'll have an engineer, Ben Cato from Millstone Engineering, who can answer any engineering questions for you. As a preliminary matter, as you probably know from your packets, it's an application to construct a twenty-six thousand four hundred and fifty square foot storage building. It's on a site that, again, as you all probably know, it's a commercial industrial site that has been used for, to support yachting and marine trades for decades. It's in the waterfront zone, again, that's a zone committed to marine and marine-related activities, which is, will be dedicated to. And also, I'll just finally note that the building will be designed and is designed to match the scale and the appearance of the existing buildings, both at Hinckley. But if you go down to Safe Harbor, you see the similar types of buildings. So it's consistent with the, kind of the aesthetics and massing of the area, and it's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. With those kind of preliminaries taken care of, I'm gonna ask Chris Ruling to come up and kind of explain the project to you and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, my name, my name's Chris Ruling, I'm the current general manager of the Hinckley Portsmouth Service Site. Sure, it's Chris, C-H-R-S, R-U-H-L-I-N-G.
So Chris, if you can just explain your position, what you do there, and your responsibilities, and then we'll start to explain why Hinckley wants to go forward with this project.
I'm currently the general manager, I operate the entire site, responsible for all the foreman, service managers and trades that are on site. Currently, we employ, from the service side of things, just over a hundred and fifty people on site. We, we offer every discipline in the marine industry. We've been, and it has been on that site for thirty-plus years now. I've been admiring the site for years from afar, I was a former brewery yacht yard employee, so I've been in the area for almost forty years now, on the bay, operating marines and boatyards. The, the current site is set up. We've been able to develop more in the way of trades offerings, and we've grown the different segments of our, of our business, both on the power and sales side, and more so in the way of the Hinckley side, and the boats that we're building up in Maine. The, currently, we also operate and occupy three off-site buildings here in Portsmouth. So we're trucking boats seasonally back and forth from, from three different sites, Vanguard Skater Park and the Fordham Freedom Boat Building Facility on Old Font Lane. So our goal ultimately is to try and avoid having to spend time moving our trades back and forth from the off-site buildings. Additionally to that, we'd like to have the efficiencies of bringing those boats down towards our facility where we can operate certainly a lot more safely. And in the end, I think we'd be in a position where we're gonna grow our, our seasonal staff a good bit, and then annually, we're looking at adding upwards of twenty jobs in the process. So the, currently, we store roughly two hundred and fifty boats, two hundred and seventy boats off-site. We're, we're looking to try and bring them down to, for obvious added efficiencies and opportunity to keep track of the trades on-site and avoid a lot of the traffic through the course of the town, additionally add efficiencies to the company.
Pretty good, and you just described the building a little bit and how it will operate?
The building that we're, that we're proposing to put up is what is referred to as a rack building. You may be aware of the, a different segment of the business that's not typically offered in the northeast region, or so in the south. And what it does is we, with larger forklifts, we're able to put boats up to forty-five feet in racks. So we increase our efficiencies on-site, enabling, enabling us to put boats upwards of three high in the existing rack building that we've proposed, of fifty-five feet in height, which is typical of what's on-site now, is roughly fifty feet, fifty-two feet of the buildings that exist on-site now. That adds a lot of efficiency, a lot of opportunity for us to avoid having to truck boats off-site, and certainly keeps, keeps everything close by. And with our abilities to generate more income and, and diverse trades on-site.
So if anybody has any questions for Mr. Ruling?
I do. All makes sense, it's all good, always happy to see those improvements. If, any chance if we could go back to the previous slide? That one right there. Just below the orange building is, in the Weaver Cove Development, there's gonna be a restaurant there with a hundred parking places. And there's a right of where, a right-of-way, right in front of that building. It's like right on the edge of that right-of-way, and I'm not even sure at the moment if, if there isn't a setback, or if it could be pushed back. But right now, the way that road is, the two other buildings to the right of that, which would be the east side, I think, already dangerously cuts, and we just don't wanna see people leaving the restaurant bouncing off the side of the buildings, and especially if somebody had parking or something to do, or plowing in the middle of winter or something, if there was any opportunity for that building to just shimmy up a little more in the north.
So let me just, let you answer the business side of that, but just from a, the setting, it's, it's not in the setback, so it's not near the property line. It's the easement there is fifty feet wide, so there's, there's plenty of room for a roadway and at least a ten-foot buffer on either side. So it's, it's plenty wide as it, as it exists right now. As a matter of right, they have the right to build the building.
Oh, I.
Where it is, in, in absence some kind of, you know, if the fire marshal says it's dangerous, whereas I get that, but they have a right to build it up next to the easement, most of the other buildings are kind of situated in that, in that way. But that, that's kind of the legal side, let me, let me, let Mr. Ruling explain why they're, have it the way it is.
Everything that we do on-site and the way we invoice our customers and, and realize utilization of the efficiency of the facility is maximizing everything related to square footage. We invoice our customers based on the square footage of the property, and ultimately in the buildings. If we were, say, to put a ten or fifteen-foot space between the backside of the building and the current easement, we'd be in a position where we'd be basically relinquishing roughly seventy-five thousand dollars every six months, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for that two hundred and thirty by fifteen-foot square footage. Additionally to that, the, the current buildings, both building eight A and our current building four that was built in nineteen thirty are all, are both up against the current easement as it exists.
Right, which we just, we're hoping to not make it any worse than it already is. But if you're, if you meet, and like you say, by rights, you, you have the right to be right where you are, and it is a thirty-foot right-of-way plus ten-foot buffer, it's just maybe our eyes were making it look like that it's tighter than that, but.
Yeah, so I, I asked this question of, of Mr. Ruling and some of the other people, and they explained, as Mr. Ruling just did, you know, when you're in the storage building?
Yep.
Space is money.
Of course.
So you have fifteen feet times two thirty, you're talking, I don't know how many boats stacked stem to stern, each at whatever it is, five, six thousand dollars, maybe more, a year. You're talking about losing money in perpetuity for that space. So it's, it's not that we're being insensitive to the, to the area, but it's, it is, they're in the storage, storage.
Totally understand, my business is next door to the Elephant Lane, so I see how you guys pack them in and make the best of everything, so I, I do understand it. It's just, I guess, our site just looking this way, seemed tight, but if it is what it is, then.
We'd love to invite you folks down for a tour, it might, it might be very helpful for, for everybody to see the site in person, to get a, to get a firsthand experience of, of how it's laid out and what it would look like going forward.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
You're speaking.
Yeah.
We're speaking specifically to the.
To the easement fifty-foot off of this line, parallel to Little Harbor Way, right?
On the south side.
Yeah, the Little Harbor Way is the easement.
Yeah, and so I guess within that, that also meets the condition of the fire department, which is the twenty-foot width of the road, and then ten feet to the building, right? So you're saying you're meeting both.
Exceeding it, right, you said thirty-foot wide plus ten feet.
Could have fifteen feet on each side if, if, in that easement area.
Yeah.
As, as designed, between that and the building to the east, there's forty feet, which also meets it, but, but, but less so.
Have you had, it might be too preliminary, you have discussions with the fire department, but on the other sides, in terms of access right-of-way, is there any requirement or interest based on the height of the building or otherwise for access to the other three sides of the building? And I ask that, cause there, there's no clear road there, you've got parking, are you gonna try to maintain parking or have markings to have accessways on these other areas?
My understanding is, and Mr. Cato can talk about this perhaps a little bit more, is that they, the firing department is requiring forty feet on all sides.
Right.
Yeah, and so what they're gonna need to do is keep those areas clear, so that there's, there's open access to four sides of the building.
So that'd be twenty, twenty-foot width plus ten feet to any building or structure.
That's right.
On either side.
So at, as the picture is shown, the fire department wouldn't be happy about those four cars or the boats that are, if they need forty feet around the building, access.
That's, that's kind of an ongoing conversation, we think that's what they're gonna say.
Right.
And if that's what they say, that's what we're gonna do.
Yep.
You know, we'll keep, we'll put up signs, and there'll be no parking of boats or cars there anymore.
Right.
But, but in terms of just the dimensions, they need forty feet. How they want that maintained, we're gonna follow their lead, however they wanna do it.
That's a lot of money lost, right?
Well, we don't, they don't charge for parking, that's like employee.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay. I just see all the boats stored, yep. Anybody else have?
So I guess, just related to that, then I would assume as we get, you know, beyond master plan, to preliminary, you, you would depict how you'd have markings to control that. I, I'm the head of facilities at Newark, we have a pretty significant parking problem, so there's, there's parking designs and intent to where people are allowed to park, and then there's the reality of ticketing and, and where people are parking in just blatant egress lanes and things. So maybe just something to consider, there's, what you see on paper is, yeah, that's accessway, that's clear.
Yep.
But discouraging obstructions and violations to that would, I think, help with routing through the fire department.
We have, we, we do internally, we do our own kind of lines of demarcation for guys when they're operating the equipment, so they have visual space acuity, so they can understand where they are position-wise in, in the facility when driving the equipment. So those different lanes would be marked accordingly, depending on the type of equipment that's moving around the facility.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that sort of ties to come into the site sometime.
Yeah, and we'll come at the next stage, or we'll come forward with, you know, more specifics on how we're gonna do that, and the parking plan and things like that.
Okay.
A lot of it's not required, we do it for ourselves, for efficiency and safety reasons, otherwise, anyway.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruling? I'll have Mr. Cato, the engineer.
Oh, okay, once they finish there, then you're a public. Unless you have a, do you have a specific question for the gentleman?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, so this would be a gentleman from the public that would like, ask a question? Okay, yep, that's, that's what I originated. All right, okay, so let's get the engineer. State your name and occupation.
Sure, hi, I'm Benjamin Cato, registered professional civil engineer with Millstone Engineering in Warwick, Rhode Island, that's C-A-I-T-O. I'm a civil engineer on this project, and normally I give a presentation about what the project entails, but I think you've, you've seen the gist of it already. I just wanted to, to correct one thing, just so that we're all clear on the, the fire department regulations and the width, and it is twenty plus ten. The reason forty has been thrown around is because we're, we're taking that to mean when there are two buildings near each other, as you have here into the east, that that wouldn't require forty, the twenty-foot lane, and then the ten feet to each building. On the other three sides, you would only need thirty, because there's no other building over there, so I just wanted to clarify that. I think we've, we've touched on everything else, the easement, or right-of-way, as we mentioned, is fifty feet wide, so we feel there's plenty of room for roadway, shoulder, and, and access movements within that fifty-foot right-of-way, which is, you know, usually in a facility like this, you'd see thirty feet of pavement, so there is plenty of room to, to design and build a driveway access, should you need one. I just hear for any questions, really, if you have questions, I'm, I'm available. Yep.
Public will have more questions.
Sure.
We will, thank you. All right, sir, if you would like to come up, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Tom Kinsley, and K-I-N-S-L-E-Y, and I live at three thirty-eight King Charles Drive. And it's a little down to the left or north of the Marina. I'm about four houses away from the Marina and King Charles Drive, and a couple things that I wanna make you aware of is being a good neighbor. And there are few things that have happened at the Marina, and I don't know what company you work for, but I'm associating you with the Marina, in general speaking. But, oh, I've lived for five years here, and I believe the Marina was taken over about the time that I became a citizen of Portsmouth. And since that time, the Marina has grown gangbusters, and I'm sure it's great for them, and their revenue's grown great. But again, going back to good neighbor. Space for the fire department, I'll leave for the fire department, but I think it's important that there's enough space, because there was a very big fire. One of those cranes or hoist tires came on top of fire, and that was a big problem. I called the general manager of the Marina one day, because one of those tires that was on those hoists that came on fire was on, I clean from that cove right there that's on the picture, all the way to Corey Lane. And I walk up and down and clean trash that comes from mostly fishing boats, but I called the general manager, and I said, hey, one of your tires is on the beach, six hundred pound tire is high, and I said, hey, can you guys come and clean it up? Oh, it's not our tire, must have fallen off a barge, and this is just about being a good neighbor, right? So I worked with the gentleman at Public Works, and I got some guys from the Brown Track and Field Team, and we pushed the tire part of a mile to the bottom of Corey Lane, and they took it away from the town of Portsmouth with a giant crane, and cleaned that mess up. And every time I come back from the winter, it seems like there's more lights at the Marina. And the lights aren't out in the shipyard facing toward the building, they're on the building facing out toward the boats. And it lights up my living room four houses away in the middle of the night. And that's another reason about being a good neighbor, they could have put the poles away from the Marina out, and they, at the end of the boats where they're parked or docked, and face them toward the Marina, and they would be a good neighbor. And a couple of neighbors have complained, and it's fallen on deaf ears. So those are a couple things, the fire, the lighting, the tire, just being a good neighbor. And I appreciate the fact that their revenue's grown, and they're hiring a couple more people, but I think they can be better neighbors for the neighbors in the neighborhood. And I think they should do some things to improve the quality of life for the neighbors in the neighborhood. And I'll say one other thing, would you like to wake up in the morning at seven o'clock in the morning to beep, beep, beep from all the cranes that are moving around and the forklifts, and they're now gonna put the boats in this house that are leveled up? Well, how do they get those boats down with a giant forklift? And every morning, it's gonna be more beep, beep, beeping, and even on Sunday mornings, when those forklifts put the boats on to get the boats out early in the morning, and it's gonna be more beep, 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 if this building goes up. So those are my points, and I think we should hold their feet to the fire to do some things about that they can do to be a better neighbor now versus when they have already the approval to build the building. And I also had one other administrative question, did everybody see this stuff? I get the, all the meeting information for the town of Portsmouth, I couldn't find this one on the site, maybe I just missed it, but the zoning meetings, there's, all the stuff is on the site in advance, so you can look at it to determine if you wanna go, but I didn't see, was this on the website? I didn't know the agenda was.
I'm sorry, Mr.
The agenda was.
Mr. Kinsley, the agenda is posted on the town website, unfortunately, the backup is not.
Well, in the zoning, I mean.
I, I know, the, the planning department staffs the zoning board, we are looking to see how we can get our planning applications up on our town website, just like we do with the zoning board.
That would be an improvement, because I may not have shown it, I was able to see it beforehand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm in consideration.
No problem, I, just coming up here and saying it, I am sure that what you have said has not fallen on deaf ears, and I am sure they're a, a top-quality company and stuff, and they don't wanna make things any worse. As far as the beep-beep and backing up, they have to have that noise, so they're not running over somebody that's there. I don't know about the operating hours, I don't know if they work on Sunday mornings.
Well, you could look at the building, and it would, I don't know if it's twenty-five percent or fifty percent more beep-beeps, but it's gonna be a good percentage of beep-beeps in a building that size.
It'll also be inside instead of outside.
Well, that, not when they take the boat out and run it to the water, and the hoist that they've gotta put it in.
I, I will ask them to maybe clarify, it's not specifically to this building, which tonight, that's what we're here for, is this building.
Exactly, but this building will increase that, I don't know if it's twenty-five percent or fifty percent or what the percentage, because I don't know how many buildings, but you look at that, and based on the number of buildings and they're stacking them, it could be a fifty percent increase.
Sir, yeah, I, I appreciate the feedback, I'd say for the, for the existing facilities, you know, we're not, we're, unfortunately, we're not the enforcement police, but those are fair questions, what the hours are. If you're, if you were encountering noise and loud light encroachment issues, you know, and if there are restrictions on that, maybe they can, can speak to the existing, but for the. But for the specifics to this petition, those are appreciated. You know, we can, as we get to preliminary design, I'm sure we can, we typically do ask those questions about the lighting considerations, you know, downlighting by spotlights that are hitting a budding neighbor. So, but in terms of enforcement to your existing concerns now, that, that, that's really not our jurisdiction. That doesn't mean you can't ask. I don't know if it'd be the town administration official or the police.
Mr. Kinsley, you can always come to the planning department on the second floor and speak to those issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of points of clarification because Mr. Kinsley raises some legitimate concerns for, for an abutter, especially residential abutter. I, I believe King Charles though is south of NEB. So it's on the other side of NEB, not a budding Hinckley, the Hinckley yard. So I think what he's probably experiencing is the growth of the NEB business. I'm sorry, well, Safe Harbor.
Yeah.
The Safe Harbor business down there, which we don't have any control over. I, I would just note also that this particular rack building is not like the rack buildings you see in Florida, where the boats come out every day. These are going to be seasonal storage. So they go in, they stay there for nine months, they come out. There's a busy shoulder season, but it's not the back and forth of boats. And I think what, what we're trying to achieve is actually a less impact on the surrounding area because less trips back and forth with heavy boats on trailers going to these other sites. So I think it will actually reduce the impact, at least going up the hill, those houses there, which is really, I think, probably the closest residences to, to the, to the Hinckley yard.
Yeah. There will be structures and stuff when Weaver Cove gets developed. And that'll be a problem at that time.
Yeah. And, and, and just, I, I would add, we're talking to Weaver Cove about a number of issues. I think when, you know, you have two businesses next door to each other, there's going to be a lot of conversations in the future in terms of how to best cooperate. So both businesses can maximize the use of, of that property line and the area around the property line. So we've already had a meeting and we expect that there will probably be many more, so.
Okay, thank you. You know the drill.
Tom Grebe, 110th Air Drive. I want one question. Has it been said how tall this building is? Will it need a variance? Is it within the, the height limits for the area?
I, I, they did say what the height was, which was like fifty-four feet or.
I believe that's, that's higher than, than, than the, the waterfront area allows.
So consistent with that, they, they did express that. I have a similar question. Size and scale. This building similar to the base. Then I think I heard that Jason may be fifty-two feet. So if they could clarify that, I believe the petition essentially need a waiver for fifty-five.
We will. It's, it's thirty-five. It's the, it's the limit. We're going to fifty-five, which most of the other buildings are. But in order to do that, we're going to need a variance. So we're not gonna, we didn't really address it with you folks tonight because it's not really part of the master plan. But we're certainly going to address that with the zoning board.
Yeah.
And when we go to get a variance from the height.
One of the, the things that I would like to bring up to, to the board is the most recent building going up is, was sixty-nine feet, almost twice the height allowed. They did get a variance. And Hinckley has put in larger buildings before. This is going to be taller than I think most of them. But when you keep getting variances, you can come in and say, this is just like the ambience there. And what it's done, quite frankly, is blocked the southern view from the neighborhood I live in, which is north of this. Not necessarily Hinckley. But the, the entire scale, when we bought the property, you looked at the waterfront and it was thirty-five feet. And we could see the, the Newport Bridge. Today you can't. So that's, that's a, a problem that I think they need to look at and you need to look at to make sure that just by continuing variances. And quite frankly, I think the zoning board's never seen a variance they didn't like. That we've changed the scale of what was intended for that area. And I just don't want to see that continued. That's all. Thank you.
Again, I just to point a clarification. I think the new building that you might be talking about is the one at Safe Harbor. Hinckley hasn't had a new building for many, many years. This will be the first so-called expansion, at least in terms of building space and, and as long as I can remember. So I, I think that, that sixty-nine foot building, I think, is the, the really large one going up over at NEB, over at Safe Harbor.
Tony McGilvery, can you quickly point that out on the, the aerial?
Yeah, so that would be, I'm sorry, I may have said south. If I did, I was wrong.
Up here.
Of the site. And it's probably right around where the zone WD is. Safe Harbor has built a new, very large, I think much larger than the one that's proposed here, just around that site. So Safe Harbor and NEB is, is to the, to the north. And Talaria Hinckley, there is the one that says site on it.
Yeah, because Mr. Grebes lives up.
Yeah.
Where like Cromwell Drive is up in that area. So it would be, yeah, be near the boat works.
Further, further north still.
Yeah.
So I, I, you know, it's an industrial area and it's a commercial use. So I, I get the, the, the conflict there between, potential conflict between residential and, and commercial. But that's been a WD zone and commercial use for many, many years. And this is really not going to add to the intensity. In fact, I think it will bring the intensity on to the site so that it doesn't spill over to, to the neighboring areas.
To, to the height scale and Hinckley perception. I think I heard a statement, but the existing are close or not, we don't have anything else. It's fifty-five feet.
We have, everything else is, we don't have that with us, but everything else is in the fifty range. So maybe fifty-two, but they're all.
Yeah.
They're all roughly that, that size.
This will be the tallest of the ones on site.
I'm not, I'm not sure that's true. It certainly won't be markedly taller. And, you know, we'll, we'll certainly have to, I'm sure the zoning board will have questions about that, whether the, it fits in. But my understanding is that it's, all the others are in the fifty range. They might be fifty-two, whereas this one's fifty-five. So.
Are there any, at that location, are there any potential current or future residential abutters that, that where the view shed is, is dramatically impacted? Or is that considered tucked away? I don't.
I, 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 I'm not sure that it detracts from the view shed because there are already buildings situated to the north. But Weaver's Cove is planning, I believe, residences and mixed use just to the south of there. So.
Right.
In the embankment on the side of the road, I believe, at one point.
So that just be in the furthest west, it, it just seems like it could potentially impact the view shed to the north.
It, it, it might end, you know, when it.
But I, I don't know that there's much difference between thirty-five feet, which probably takes the business model for doing this out.
Thirty-five feet, I think.
Fifty-five feet.
Yeah, a rack building, obviously, we would probably go even taller if we could, but try to stay in line with the existing, existing buildings. So. But again, that's, that's all stuff that we're probably gonna have to discuss when we go for, to get a variance for the height.
Yeah, we're just asking for, you guys are just asking for master.
Right.
Okay, I think Mr. Grebes, you got another question? Or a statement?
Hi, the attorney is absolutely correct. I, I want you to know that most of the buildings are well over thirty-five feet in the area. That's my problem. That has just been allowed to continue to, and that's both Hinckley and NEB. And the, the building I was talking about that's up to seventy feet, which is twice what's supposed to be allowed, is at NEB.
Yeah.
But it is the size of a football field.
Yeah.
So it's like, almost like a dome stadium. Seriously, it's, it's a hundred feet by at, at least, I'm sorry, a hundred yards by at least fifty yards and seventy feet tall. It, it is a monster building. And that seems to have been allowed continually. That we're talking about a master plan tonight. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at the scale of what's being allowed. Because the zoning, when this was put in, was not supposed to be anywhere near that. So that's, 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 I, I'm not, I'm not against this building.
Yeah.
I'm, if, if we're talking about a master plan and thinking about, we're gonna build all the other buildings of this scale, I've got a problem with that.
I don't see that there's any more room for other buildings on here.
There, there, yeah, there, there, if, if you go, I'm not sure how to, how to point out where, but.
It says site in the, in the yellow square. And.
Let me see here. Just to, yeah, yeah, yes, if you could do this, this whole, this whole area here.
We can't see where you're placing.
Rephrasing, this whole area here.
That's Weaver Cove, that's not part of them. And that's already being developed.
Okay, maybe that's true, but I'm not sure that it is. But this, this.
There's a restaurant bucking right close to the new proposed building with a hundred parking.
The same, the same point I'm making goes to Weaver Cove as well. The scale was supposed to be a certain amount. And we, we really ought to think about changing this incrementally as we have been doing. You know, one building at a time, giving a variance to the point where now someone can come in and say, I'm fitting with the ambiance of the area, the scale of the area, and I'm gonna make a seventy-foot tall building.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, to stall the building at all.
Yeah.
I love Hinckley. I think they're a great company. But, but we need, as, as the, the, the planning board, you need to look at what's going on in the area, especially when we come in under the guise of a master plan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Neil Galvin of Galvin Law. I'm standing in for my son Gerard, who's my partner. He's at a contested hearing before the Middletown Planning Board and may show up shortly here, but he asked me to fill in in the meantime. I'm here representing WC Upland Development LLC, which is the owner of a budding lot, Platte fifty, Lot six, as well as WC Coastal Development LLC, which is the owner of budding lots, Platte fifty, Lot seven, and Platte forty-three, Lot four. Now, you may recall that we applied for and received master plan approval in March of this year for a development on the lots immediately to the south and west of the applicant's lot. Our plan was extensive, covering many areas of proposed development. The northern portion of the development is intended to house an apartment building and a restaurant, as well as an access to the Marina portion of our development. Our development depends on several means of access, ingress and egress to our properties. One of these means of access is a fifty-foot wide easement that traverses over the Talaria property from its connection to Stringham Road, all the way through the Talaria property on its southern side, terminating close to where Talaria's proposed new building ten sits. You may recall that at our master plan hearing, Talaria's attorney addressed this board. He did not object to our plan. Rather, he put on the record his client's concern about the use of that easement and how that may impact his client's use of its own property. Tonight, we're here in a similar posture. As you look at an aerial photograph, which is included in the application, you can clearly see the easement as it has been laid out by Talaria's own engineer. You can see a few things. One, there is one Talaria building that already encroaches on the easement. Two, there are a significant number of boats, vehicles and apparent.
Are you referring to the corner of building eight?
Correct. And there are a significant number of boats, vehicles and apparently temporary buildings that encroach on the easement. And three, the proposed new building, building number ten, is placed virtually on top of the northern boundary of the easement. We respect the rights of Talaria to put its property to its desired use. But we must protect our rights to clear access to our property over the easement. We do not wish to object to their building. But we have asked them at this master plan stage to consider pushing it back approximately fifteen to twenty feet to be in line with the neighboring building, building eight to the east. We feel that this will at least provide some buffer to allow for the safe use of the easement. Further, in light of the fact that it appears that the building will be approximately sixty percent taller than the height allowed by right, the buffer from the easement we are suggesting would also make that height less imposing over our property. From a fire safety perspective, we expect that the town would want a buffer on four sides of the building and also have the building set off from the access easement to allow for safety. Hinckley's the tenant of the Talaria property has a practice of lining its building perimeters with boats and equipment as demonstrated in the application photos. This is evidence of what we might expect in the easement if this building is approved in the current location. We agree with Talaria that determinations over any disputed use of the easement would be made in a jurisdiction like the Superior Court, not at a planning board hearing. However, the town has its own access and safety issues that it must address. We have engaged with Talaria to try to work through these issues collaboratively and in a neighborly manner. We classify those discussions to date as positive and constructive. We hope they continue. And it's even possible that they could lead to an entirely new access point that could resolve many of these easement issues. While we do not wish to object to their project at this stage, we must also place our concerns about access on the record, which is based on the information we know at this stage. As you know, Talaria originally filed a master plan application seeking two additional buildings. So we know that they most likely have additional plans. In light of so many unknowns, we must reserve the right to object at any future hearing or application. So we wanted Mr. Chairman to set that on the record and also point out that we are very hopeful of positive interaction with Talaria's attorney in the future to see if something good can come of this. Thank you.
Just one quick thing. That first question that I asked about setting it seemed like that was not in the cards. Are you, are your conversations still taking place? Or has that sort of like, that was a while ago?
Which questions, which question is that?
Was, could the building be just scooped up? And, and they absolutely brought it that financially, there's such a loss.
That's pretty much what they've said to us at this stage. You know, we, we can only have the conversation, make the request, make the approach. And that's what they've concluded at this stage. Despite that, they didn't object to our petition. We do not want to formally object to their petition, but want to preserve rights in the future to object if things unfold that would necessitate that. But we're trying to keep that spirit of goodwill going and the positive nature of it. So we're, we're continuing to be hopeful in that regard and hope that it plays out. We both have major developments to to deal with here, and we, we would both like to have positive outcomes for both.
Well, I guess maybe not. Well, you, you brought it up and you brought up a good point. And just as we earlier brought up about the space around the new building. point. Uh, and just as we earlier brought up about the, uh, space around the new building, uh, where you see all these cars currently, how, how does one police, uh, when it becomes very busy down there with the restaurant and, and the living space and stuff, sees that right away? If currently all these cars are sticking in the, uh, right away as there is, I, I don't know how we would or who would be that would enforce. As they said, there'd be strict painting and lines for the fire department, you know, that you need to have that kind of space. It looks like, and call me if I'm wrong, that the markings would take up a lot of the area, the parking spaces or where these boats are currently stored. So I guess.
Yeah, some, some of those things, should there be conditions, uh, put in place? Uh, some could be town impacted, uh, others could be impact of an easement and intrusion on an easement and more Superior Court oriented, those kinds of things in terms of enforcement. So difficult to say.
Just like they're asking for, or will be asking for a variance for height.
Right.
They may have to, but I don't know if that's us or that's when they get to zoning, that we're this, uh, asking, right? Tonight, if, if I'm correct, is sort of giving permission to go to the next stage where all this stuff grinds out and a lot more.
Lot more detail.
Yeah, a lot more details at this point tonight where it's good that, like you and Mr. Grebe and the other gentlemen spoke what it is. So it's on the record and it's not going to be a surprise in the next round where these questions will come up and they can maybe ahead of time already answered and shown based on, you know, everybody's discussion here tonight of, uh, some of the things that were brought up that they're, like you're saying, good neighbors, they're gonna already have addressed some of these things. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you very much.
Yep. You guys have any more?
Uh, no, that's, that's unless there are any questions from the board. Um, again, I, I agree with Mr. Galvin, as I typically do. Um, this is, uh, it's an issue in terms of the use of the easement. That's going to be an issue down the road where the parties are going to have to cooperate. We're not going to be able to, you, you're not allowed to exclude an easement holder from the easement. So things are going to have to change. Um, but right now it's an empty lot next door. So they're not using, uh, using it. But those are the types of discussions that we plan to have going forward. It's, it's just going to be necessary for the parties to, to cooperate and we expect that that's going to happen. So.
Everybody's going to play nice.
Well, it's, it's, uh, you know, when you have two businesses next to each other, there's so much to lose if you don't play nice. I expect that the parties will, will, will do so. So.
Okay. Any more questions on the board? Somebody like to make motion?
Um, sure. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I do have one more question, um, for the petitioner. Um, trying to remember what it is. Uh, sorry. Um, yeah. I lost it.
Yeah.
Preliminary.
Oh, yeah, for the next meeting.
Yeah. Uh, there it is. The, the zoning board, the, obviously that the height, uh, is an issue. You do need to get relief variance from the zoning board. Is that, are you going before the zoning board, before you invest a lot of money with engineering?
Yeah.
Come back to us at the preliminary design?
I think that's, that's the order of events. After we get the master plan, we go to zoning and then it's assuming we get the variance, um, or maybe it'll be modified from our requests. Then we'll do all the engineering for preliminary and, and final.
So you, you expect to get your tea leaf signals at least from them before, before you are investing?
Oh, yeah. I think we'll get more than, more than tea leaves. We, we make it a hot cup of coffee in our face. We, hopefully that we won't, but, uh.
Thank you.
And that'll be cleared up there.
Um, any other questions?
Nope. Just other than. Somebody make a motion?
Okay, yeah. I, I, um, I'll go ahead and make a, a motion for, uh, this petitioner's master plan approval for major land development, construct, uh, the, uh, new proposed building number 10. Um, I'd like to add of just, uh, conditions that there be a consideration of the abutters own development rights and access constraints, um, in coordination with the fire department and your, and your abutter. Um, they have, they have their rights and they, they are constrained by having to use that right away. Uh, as well, um, you know, with, uh, consideration of how you would avoid obstructions, uh, whatever that is maybe through signage markings, leasing, enforcement, um, and, uh, enforcing, um, clear right-of-way requirements, including those obvious, uh, 20-foot, uh, right-of-way requirements and the 10-foot stand-ups to the, to the roads, to the buildings, excuse me. That's, that's it. Anything else to add?
No. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? You guys are all set? Thank you.
Okay. Onto item four. Approved the November 8th, uh, approval of the November 8th, 2023 monthly project status report administrative subdivisions, flat plan, recording status of new construction. What is your pleasure?
I actually, let's see if I can. There seem, there, we not, there, there seems to be like this FLJ acquisition. Does that even still exist? There, there are, there, I keep looking at some of these projects and these people are long gone, long out of business, as far as I know. Is there any of these things that we can clean up and take off?
Mr. Lozinski? Yeah. So the, the question was, there's some items on the, on the monthly status list that appear to be entities that are, are long dissolved or no longer in function. Is it possible we could get a look at those and maybe update the list and for the future meeting? But, but I want to caution the board, we don't want to delve too deeply into one of these. It's just for information purposes. If we do, we should put it on the next agenda so people can talk to it. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what's our pleasure?
So, motion to accept the monthly progress status report as written, put on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, how about a motion to adjourn?
How about a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Harding, seconded by Ms. Wilson. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Thank you. You did.
One is too bad. No.